Called to order, the Grant County Board of Commissioners Work Session for December 9th, 2014. Welcome, everybody. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Salute to the Lack.
I pledge allegiance to the Lack of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to its end, just as for all. I salute the Lack of the State of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship, a model of united culture.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the work session agenda. Is there any changes?
Mr. Chairman, with your approval, let's go ahead and move up the presentation of the Giving Hands mural up to the top of your agenda so they can make their presentation.
Okay. Any objections?
Sure.
Alright. So then we'll move to the purpose. The general purpose of a county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed in the next regular meeting, and for department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters of their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 1401, we welcome the public to attend the county work session, however, there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. So next item on the agenda is the presentation with the mural.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There. Thank you all for letting me be here today. My name is Serena Pack, and the quote that I hold dear to me is by Melissa Teresa, that I alone cannot change the world, but I can cast stones across the waters and create many ripples. Today, I'd like to share with you a short video of what I've been doing, a project that's very special. So if you want to look to the screen. I believe that if we each give a hand in service, we can achieve the world's most desirable. This Serena Pack, past State President, Grant Willie Pfizer of New Mexico of the International Order of the Rainbow Girl, also National Youth Ambassador for New Mexico, and an officer of the American Legion Army in 18. I would like to introduce to you my vision, my project from 2013-14, the Giving Hands Mural Project. As this video continues, you will see many photos from workshops and presentations I have given to the youth across our state. They participate in leadership workshops and have learned to share views of patriotism and to cut their handprints out of clay as a pledge being made to give a hand in service. I have started this project with many veterans. Few years ago, I began work towards building funds to help create a statewide, year-long project that hopefully inspires youth across our state to learn about the importance of volunteering, to be of service, to be leaders, but also be patriotic, to appreciate the rights and freedoms we have been given by our military and our veterans. The Giving Hands Mural Project is a large mural which has a tree of life made of the handprints from the youth and veterans across our state. The branches and leaves are of the youth's handprints, the tree trunks and the ground are the veterans and active military I visited with this past year, and also masons that support my project and my term as State President of the New Mexico Rainbow Girls. Without our veterans, without the leaders in our lives, we, the youth, would not have the foundation to see the change. This special project has traveled across our beautiful state to many conferences where I've showed many hundreds of youth about leadership, patriotism, and the importance of service. The tree is constructed with the backing of plywood and has clay hands attached to it that were cut by the youth and veterans. These handprints have been attached to boards, and the boards fit together to form a tree approximately 12 feet by nine feet. The final vision of the mural project is to have the mural hand-painted by ourselves, mother, and grandmother, who are professional western artists, and will depict the southwest sundown over the kneeling nun. The ground will have grass and more handprints and red copies. On the wall, there will be five imblems with the branches of our military. To offer all the veterans, who will be afraid, "Thank you for your voice," which was my theme in my local and national features. The overall size of the term is based for loud. Funding for the project has been achieved through a grant I received from YSA as a National Youth Ambassador when I was like to show up in New Mexico. I have also had the opportunity to meet with Senator Heinrich to share him with statewide initiatives to inspire our youth to give a hand in service and to hold patriotism dear to their heart. This grant along with additional funds provided by the American Legion Post 18, and additional funds I raised in my art, and also additions done by Senator Childs, Ingalls Art, and Ace Hardware that has made this possible. It is my vision to have this mural's final home in Silver City where many can enjoy it for generations to come. Thank you for your support. So here I am today presenting this, as hopefully this can be erected here in Silver City at the conference center. It has gone across our state. Many youth have been involved in pledging their service to be active in their communities and also thanking our veterans because it was for their, what they have done that has given us so many rights and freedoms, and it's a very important part and aspect in our lives. So thank you for letting me here present today, and thank you all for being here to support me. It means a lot. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Okay. And we've all met with you, I believe, and I think that all of us feel as though this is a worthy project, and we're not even to the preliminary planning yet. So I personally can't approve putting it in there until I know we have the space. The last time I talked to you and Ray, we talked about getting specs on it, we talked about getting sign exactly how much wall space you need so we can start working with our architect to see if it's even possible, because you were talking like you needed so much room of wall space up and down height, and I don't even know if it's possible. So that's the kind of things we're gonna need, and we're probably gonna need it in the next couple of weeks. When are we gonna start preliminary? Next week? Next week. So we're gonna need it in the next three or four weeks before we can guarantee you this is gonna be placed in there. If it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit. So. Anybody else?
And by all means, we don't want to disappoint you, but this is something we do gotta consider before we, you know, carry on and approve putting it in there. And if we can't put it in there, we'll find out, we'll figure out somewhere else that's gonna be feasible here within Grant County, but you know, please get us some specs and we'll try and accommodate as we can.
Well, the tree is nine feet by 12 feet. The width of it can be adjusted to whatever the wall space would be needed.
Nine by 12, which direction?
Nine high, 12 wide. And it's ready to go on any wall, and the width of the rest of that is determined by the space allowed. That is where the painting of the kneeling nun would be, just however wide I could have.
Repeat that again? Say, after walk right before the kneeling nun?
The painting behind the tree, the width, that can be changed, it can be lengthened, it can be shortened, in addition to the tree, to have the painting on the southwest behind it.
Can it have doors through the painting?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
There's just a lot of things, so, okay. And I know that there's a lot of, all the veterans groups want to put stuff in there also, so of course, we gotta try and accommodate for everyone, that's our job, but we gotta figure this thing out, so we really need to leave some room for the veterans groups to put their stuff.
We'll have all the branches.
Oh yeah, definitely.
But I guess we're not just gonna concentrate on that mural, we wanna make sure it's a really nice veterans area. But thank you very much, we really do appreciate you putting in a lot of hard work into this, so we appreciate you.
Well, you know, I just echo what our chairman has said, is that we're in the planning stages of this project, and it's important for us to make sure the architect understands what they're gonna be working with. As said by Commissioner Ramos, with the veterans have a plan for some of their stuff in there besides this, it's my understanding. I do appreciate the presentation that I received a month or so ago, and I think I stated then that we're in the planning stages of this, and we need to make sure it's done right if, in fact, we're gonna do it, okay? So thank you for your presentation day, thank you veterans for being here today.
Okay, I got your dimensions, we'll get those to the architect when we meet with him next week, and we'll start there.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you should, uh, tell the tech.
Absolutely, Mr. Harrison, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to review the December 11th regular meeting agenda. Go ahead, Charlie.
We have no changes to the agenda. You want to start from finances?
Yeah. You go ahead and start with the expenditure report, and that'd be Linda.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The expenditure report that you have in front of you is for the period ending December 8th, 2014, and the AP checks begin with check number 172583, and then with check 172903, and that is a total of $1,122,172.62. Included in that expenditure report, in the AP checks, is a check to Bank of America for $22,947.37, and that is a lease payment for a Tyrone fire truck. There is a payment to Hala Regional Medical Center in the amount of $121,267.09, and that is for the October inmate engine jet claims. There is a check to HCP Systems in the amount of $14,545.20, and that is for the November 2014 inmate medical management care. And there's also a check in there to the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration in the amount of $17,000, and that is for an overpayment in the Small County's assistance payment for fiscal year 2013 and 2014. There is also a check to IPR LTD in the amount of $174,655.22, and that is for the slurry ceiling at the runway at the Grant County Airport. And also in this expenditure report is payroll checks for the pay periods ending October 26th through November 8th, 2014, and that is in the amount of $210,036.30. And there is also payroll period number 24, and that covers November 9th through November 22nd, 2014, and that is in the amount of $212,198.48. And there's also the sheriff's boot allowance, as it's stated in the union contract, in the amount of $4,944.57. So the total payroll checks in this report is $427,179.35. The grand total of expenses in this report is $1,549,351.97.
Any questions on the expenditure report? Seeing none, we'll move to the cash flow analysis.
Okay, this cash flow analysis is actually for the month ending October 31st, 2014. The general fund cash balance at July 2014 is $2,353,926. Revenues through October 31st were $1,304,803, and expenditures through October 31st was $970,161, and that's for the operating expenditures. For salaries and benefits through October 31st is $2,017,128, leaving us with an actual cash balance of $671,429. The projected transfers in are $614,683. The projected transfers out are $2,691,874. Projected revenues through July through June 2015 is $10,862,207. The projected operating expenditures through June 2015 is $1,824,721. And the projected salaries and benefits through June 30, 2015 is $4,472,860, with the projected cash balance at the end of June 2015 of $2,487,434, with a projected surplus of $796,811. In the growth fund, the beginning cash balance at July 2014 was $120,460, and the revenues through October 31st is $220,709. The operating expenditures through October 31st is $86,229.13. Salaries and benefits through October 31st is $433,869. The projections through June 30, 2015 are transfers in of $666,432, projected revenues of $782,730, and projected operating expenditures of $267,781. The projected salaries and benefits through June 2015 is $864,330, with the surplus, estimated surplus of $437,000 at June 30, 2013, with the cash balance at June 30, 2015 of $138,121. You will note that, notice that there is a negative cash balance as of October 31st in the amount of $178,929, but that's due to the cash transfers that will take place this month. And for the correction fund, the actual cash balance at July 2014 was $26,163,000. The revenues through October is $322,140, and the operating expenditures as of October 31st is $202,206, and the salaries and benefits through October 31st is $683,745, leaving us with an actual cash balance of a negative $537,647,000. And again, that is due to the cash transfers that will take place this month. The projections through June 30, 2015 are transfers in of $1,670,263, projected revenues of $637,399, projected operating expenditures of $446,654, projected salaries and benefits of $1,323,322, and this will leave us with a projected cash balance of $39 at the end of June 30, 2015.
Very much, any questions on the cash flow? No. Okay. Moving on to new business, we're going to, go ahead, Charlene, let you do this.
Under new business, you will hear a report from the Department of Game and Fish on the Silver City Deer Management activities. They are scheduled to be here on Thursday for that presentation. Next item on your agenda is Declaration of Prescriptive Easement on Rosedale Road, and Abby's been working on that.
This is sort of our last step in getting the money for the Colonia's grant for Rosedale Road, and so INMAC is asking us to do a declaration of a prescriptive easement on Rosedale Road. It's kind of out of the ordinary, I haven't had to do this before for the Colonia's grant, but they have kind of stringent standards for the property that you're going to be constructing on. So what you're gonna have before you will be a plat, I believe this is where yours are making some final changes to it. It'll be a plat showing the road and where we think the easement is, or where we're declaring the easement is. You've seen these types of plats before, so that'll be the extent of it, and it should allow us to go into the next phase and complete the project.
Okay.
And it's over 600,000 per head, so it's a really, it has to be about 692.
Those people will be happy, don't they? Okay, Jay?
Let's see. Wind Canyon approves, approved Wind Canyon and Wind Canyon II subdivision petition to create an assessment district. You're probably aware that Wind Canyon has been working on, they've already done their dedication, so we have a right to work on the road now, and now we're in the petition phase, and Ray's been preparing this, our new subdivision officer, and we're at the phase where, or the stage where we're gonna ask you to approve the petition. Anthony and Ray have reviewed the petition, and they have the sufficient amount of signatures. This one is a little different in that on their petition, they have actually inserted an estimate, an estimated amount that would be assessed to each property owner. What we're asking you is to approve the petition signatures, not that amount. So I'll have a motion, oh, here it is, I'll just read it to you, what I think would be appropriate, that you would move to approve or disapprove the petition to create an improvement district benefiting Wind Canyon Estate subdivision and Wind Canyon II subdivision, with the condition that any cost estimates stated on the petition and petition signature pages are not accepted. Not just because the costs change as you figure out how much the project's gonna cost. And they, we usually do have a preliminary estimate that Earl puts together, but in this case, we didn't want it on the petition itself.
Okay. Romo Verde?
And Romo Verde is finally here. We have that dedication, that's been a long one in process, so the next stage of this one is also petition, and there doesn't seem to be anything out of the ordinary about this petition. You have signatures in your notebook and a description of the roads that are at issue, and so that one's ready to go for your approval if you suggest.
Okay.
With both of those, the next phase, I believe, will be to have a hearing, give notice of a hearing, and then have a hearing on cost estimates. And as you remember or recall from our last assessment district, this is like, you know, there are numerous steps in this process, but Ray's seems to be getting on board now and has figured out the steps, and so I think that notice, the notice and the hearing itself will be the next step, just in case any of the residents call.
Jay, January?
I don't know, because I haven't spoken with Ray about it, but it shouldn't take long, but I, we may have to go back and do estimates again, so that may take a little bit.
Is that what you anticipate having one meeting in January due to the INMAC conference? So we'll go back to our regular schedule?
We may not have that time for that one, if not, it'll probably be in February.
Okay. Charlene, I?
Approve, disapprove inventory dilution from the lower members' fire department. They have a list of various items that they would like to remove from their inventory. They are tanks, gas engines, air compressors, things that they are no longer using. Questions on that?
Trying to get rid of an 18 horsepower pump, you know, 300 gallon water tank?
And is this gonna be transferred to another station or?
They just wanted to dispose of it, so we would actually be able to sell this if we so choose, or move it to a different department if someone wants it.
Okay.
This is the first step, just to dispose of it.
Maybe.
Possibly.
Sounds like dispose of it properly, I guess. Okay, Jay?
This is an amendment to the DWI grant agreement, which is making some changes from awarding some reverted distribution funds, as well as decreasing some categories, decreasing personnel services, increasing contractual services. So it's just an amendment to the existing DWI grant agreement, nothing out of the ordinary.
Everyone, of course, you can hear.
Item K is a grant agreement for meal equipment for the senior centers throughout the county in the amount of $38,000. And do you want to add anything, say, for anything in particular?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, this was allocated, I think, 2013, we're just, there were some questions about what had been submitted to them, there were some changes made, but if you, there's, the list is on the back of that application, shows what we're gonna, what we're gonna be doing with it, and there's been some provisions in the, in the agreement so that we make sure that, that all the proper applications and information for DFA is filed so that we, so that this bond that just passed with money, we're gonna be getting also, which I think is $170,000 to do some upgrades to the senior programs, but this is one that was given to us in.
The bond, the dollar, the cash?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Hello?
This is approve, disapprove a resolution regarding elected official salaries. In your packet, you have two different variations, after some concerns with the budget and revenues and raises that were given to county employees, the resolution in front of you is to allocate a one and a half, the equivalent of a one and a half percent increase per year to the elected officials, becoming effective January 1, 2015. This keeps them within the statutory maps.
And the employees received what?
One and a half percent.
So there's two regulations there?
Yes. There's two options there, the equivalent of one and a half percent, and then also exactly what was done back in 2011, 10, I believe.
Okay. You guys have any discussion on this?
No, I just think it's appropriate if we give the employees that, and one and a half, and it's appropriate that the, that the elected officials receive no more?
My concern is poppers down under $3, oil's under 70, state's losing $7.5 million a year with every dollar in oil goes down.
And they're projecting not giving any of the state employees raises?
I don't expect Grant County's economy to just do wonderfully in the next couple of years, so I'm not going to be for 100% of the statutory raise.
I thought it was just the.
Just because you approve it doesn't mean you have to actually give them that amount, because that's just, you're just approving the max if that's what the county wishes to do, correct?
You could do it that way, but I think for clarification purposes, you should approve what you're going to give.
That's not how I read it, though. How I read it is that whatever raise you give, they get it January 1st.
It becomes effective January 1st.
The statute reads.
Yes, you can't just, you can't approve it now and decide you're gonna give it in January, or next August, or in the middle of the term, it has the statute.
Because I think, because when I was county clerk way back when, maybe it's changed since then, I don't think it has, but I believe they approved it and didn't give the raises until the county came out of their shortfall, because they were in a real bad shortfall. When I was county clerk, I went down from $42,000 down to $37,000 when we gave up our monies, and then later on, whenever we wanted to, when the county wanted to give it back, when they're doing better, they went ahead and raised it back up. Now, I don't think they went against statute back then, because all the attorneys were very involved in that, in that issue, so that might want to be looked at.
I'm sorry, we did it back then as a resolution to decrease not only the elected officials' pay at the moment, it had already been approved, the pay increase, but we decreased the elected officials and all the employees in total, yeah, by resolution, and we just rescinded the resolution.
Temporary decrease.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
So it's not written in stone, is what I'm trying to get to?
Well, no, it was in the resolution, it was written in stone in the resolution, but the increase had already been approved to be given at the beginning of the term, but because of the shortfall we had, they also did a resolution to decrease it, and once we were back up economically, then they went back.
What I'm trying to get to then, is if we didn't want to give the raise on January 1st, we can pass another resolution stating that we're gonna leave them as is until we decide to go ahead and up it, if we decided to up it.
I would determine that, I don't know.
Because, I mean, if that's been protocol in the past, why would it be any different now? Although, I mean, if no one wants to pass it, that's fine, but, I mean, that's, we wanna make sure we get this right.
Obviously, my recommendation on what the Constitution says, and it says no midterm raises, so I think, and the statute actually says that the raise should be on the.
Can you just copy the statute before we make our decision?
Sure.
Now, the one and a half is on a four-year average. There, I mean, this isn't just set numbers. You could go on an eight-year average, you raise these slightly. There's several different ways to do it. So if anybody has any ideas, get with Charlene and maybe you can come with a consensus before Thursday on how you want to do this, but.
Adam M.
Mr. Chairman, this is the resolution of notice of intent to adopt ordinance authorizing a tax rebate to benefit low-income property taxpayers for taxable years 2015, 2016. If you recall, we did this a couple of years ago. This is mandated by statute that we consider this issue every couple of years. Last time, we declined to approve the tax rebate. The issues are the same as they were before. One is, we can't give you an exact number of how much this would cost us. And I believe what we did last time is we compared it to Santa Fe, which has similar demographics to us. And we estimated that it would cost, if we ended up similar to Santa Fe, that it would be somewhere in between $60,000 to $100,000. And something that was significant last time was that when Santa Fe adopted this, they started around $300,000 and then they ended up, it ended up costing $500,000 within a few years. So it's something that could balloon if you did approve it.
Depends on how many participate. We don't know that. Statute that we have to either approve or disapprove every two years, right?
Yes, and what's before you now is merely the resolution of intent to consider the ordinance. And then in January, we'll have the ordinance in front of you for the actual consideration.
It's one of those situations that the legislature put on the counties that if, in my opinion, if that's what they want to do, then they should go ahead and make the policy themselves rather than the counties.
Let's move on. Because he's right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go to the next one. In approve/disapprove Resolution 1464, notice of intent to adopt an ordinance granting a franchise for cable services to Comcast of New Mexico. Again, this is just a resolution of intent to consider the ordinance. And we have been franchising Comcast for numerous years and it expired and Comcast has proposed this new agreement. The fee for the franchise is the same as the last one, it's 5% of their income. So I don't believe much is changing. We're essentially just entering a new agreement, similar to the past, with the same fee. And the process is kind of arduous. Although, I haven't found a statute that requires counties to adopt an ordinance for the franchise. That has been the practice in the past when there's a fee involved, so that's why I'm putting it before you.
That's not a very big dollar amount, because they don't have a lot of easement in the county.
It's not a great amount. I don't know. I don't know if they can refer off here. Sorry. We can figure it out for Thursday.
I asked, I was like, it was good.
They're not very significant, partly because for the county, whether the city, the city probably makes a little more than we do on these.
And for some reason, we're not allowed to have franchise agreements with the power company and the gas company, only the cable companies. Yes. Okay. Adam O.
Yeah. Maybe Charlene wants to start this. She's been working with Alex on this one, and then I could talk about the other.
The city manager, Alex Brown, had approached me about a grant that the city has to extend the city sewer. Their project is Ridge Road East Sewer Extension Project, which would include approximately 162 residents onto the city sewer system. Mobile Drive, Mountain View Drive, Skyview Drive, Peasant Drive, North Peasant Drive, and Grand Mesa Road. This grant would allow the construction of the sewer line, as well as money to abandon each of the individual septic tanks. And the city is going to waive the connection fee to allow these individuals to be on the city sewer system. They currently are already on city water. And what they're requiring of the acceptance of the funding is an ordinance, which Abby has drafted, and I'll let her talk about that, which would require these individuals to be on a public sewer system.
I just want to clarify, it would just be in the extraterritorial zone, the free rail zone. And the fee waiver is specific to the project that they're working on. As for the other residents of the ETZ zone, or ETZ, that fee wouldn't be waived and they would still be required to hook up if they're within, I think it was 300 feet. And you can read the ordinance in detail. It's not very long at all, it's fairly simple.
So you're considering the ordinance, right?
Yeah. We tried to be as specific as possible to their project, but also take into account that, as it states in the ordinance, that contamination has become an issue for Silver City. So we're trying to also assist with that by putting it, including the entire ETZ zone rather than just the project they're funding at this time. If that makes sense. So it would affect every member of ETZ if they're within 300 feet of Silver's sewer system.
Who's responsible for the maintenance?
The city.
The city what?
So the way I drafted it, you'll see, it just says that those who are required to do this, to hook up to Silver City Sewer, would then follow Silver City's procedures and requirements.
Because they're already buying the water from the town.
Yeah.
So they can be billed for their sewer on that same bill.
That's the idea.
Just as long as we're not involved in the utility.
I could also see it.
Apparently not a utility company.
Currently, under the, the owners, under the draft for the town ordinance, the owners are required to connect to the public sanitary sewer of the town under the Town of Service of these Ridge Road East Sewer Extension Project. A normal $1,300 fee for such a connection will be waived and such owners will receive up to $15,000 for each home to abandon their septic tanks. The owners may be held responsible for a different cost. That's just, I don't even want to start getting heartburn that's going to be in this area. They're going to be.
Now, if you're not hooking up under that project, you would be responsible for fees.
Yes, you would.
But the majority of the people that I think is going to affect right now, it's going to be people that are falling into that project.
There's about 100?
There's, their application said it was approximately 162 residents.
62, okay. However, the sheriff's office has got the enforcement of it.
The code enforcement.
Just down there is the actual code enforcement.
Just as sheriff's office.
Yeah, that says Grand County Code Enforcement Officer.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out that, like we do with all ordinances, this one and the other two will be over in the clerk's office for anyone to come in and review if they would like to. And it, they may slightly change before you see them in January for adoption or disapproval.
Starting with.
Actually, the requirement is only that we have it advertised and available for two weeks before you consider it, but we're actually going to have it for almost a whole month, I think.
Just for the record, any sewer complaints go to Brett. It all goes to Mr. Hall.
Everything else I give him. Assignments are coming up, right?
I actually think that's your district.
No, it's yours.
No, 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 mine cuts off right there.
I feel like it's.
All right.
Next resolution?
The next resolution is to approve and adopt the 2014 Grant County Emergency Operations Plan. Gilbert Hilton has been working on this very diligently for several months, and we are to the point where we are ready for the commission to approve and adopt the plan. And this will be a resolution stating, so actually, you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't have any. Good. Bits and proposals?
Item Q is approve/disapprove award for architectural services, which was RFP 14-01 for architectural services for the county. We received seven proposals. The top two is what we, the committee is recommending. ASA Architects from Las Cruces was the number one choice. Number two is Architecture Workshop of Silver City. With the amount of work that we have in the next few years and upcoming work, we are recommending awarding to two firms to be able to have all of these projects that will overlap and be happening simultaneously. Just have any questions?
Is there a time element here that we're talking about, years, months?
Well, it's my understanding you have a certain amount of time to spend your money on your bond.
Okay, so that's the.
Yes.
Okay.
And last time that you entered into a similar agreement, it was a four-year contract and that's what we would be recommending for both.
That's as long as you can have, isn't it?
Yes. Okay. Yes, in your packet, you have the health claims, health plan, claims reports. There's 71 claims for a total of $82,236.61.
And we're paying these health claims out of the other part of the, the last one, eight, right?
Okay, any question, anything else on the agenda? Okay, move into county reports, and I see the hospital back there, so let's start with the hospital this morning. Good morning, Brian, Ollie.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'd like to give you an update for Hill Regional Medical Center as are related to our activities in November. And I'd like to start out with finances. And just as a reminder, our finances are actually back one more month. So these are October finances because of our reporting cycle. Month of October, we had a positive bottom line of $188,000. And year-to-date, at the end of October, we're at $891,000. So the direction continues with our finances. We continue in a positive direction. Our days of cash actually increased in October to 142. So things continue to go in the right direction. Our quality over this, over this last quarter, we have just hundreds of quality measures, but one, but an overall composite measure actually improved from 96% to 98%. I know that doesn't really tell you a lot. It's a composite measure made up of, you know, 50 other measures, but our quality continues to go up and our finances continue to be strong. We still have a lot more work to do in both areas. You know, we want to be the best rural hospital in the country for those we serve. So we continue to work on our quality and we continue to have to work on our finances so that we can have an appropriate bottom line to support future capital and raises and all that kind of thing. Couple additional reports. We'll be doing a space assessment. This is an old issue for Hill Regional. Targeted space assessment for potential construction in our labor and delivery area, our nursery, our OR recovery room. And it's part of a project that was attempted to move forward on several occasions, but over the next six months, we'll be working out and finalizing a construction plan, a financial plan or a financing plan for that, and working with our board to move forward with that. And of course, we'll be reporting that to all of you. We want to let you know that as healthcare continues to shift and this historic division between hospital and physicians, more and more hospitals and physicians are collaborating in another way, in a number of ways, including employment models. We've been approached, again recently, by a couple of practitioners in town, and Hill Regional will be, we've done a complete pro forma assessment and as approved by our board, we're going to be moving forward to establish a family practice clinic employed by Hill Regional to continue to grow our physician practices. And that'll probably go live in March 1st, somewhere around there. So next three or four months, a lot of activity around opening up our first family practice. We wanted to thank the community for coming out on December 4th for our annual Light Up a Life Ceremony at Hill Regional Medical Center. This is an annual event where we remember and celebrate our departed loved ones, and we had a good crowd of people come out. We had Dr. Maria Arizaga serve as our keynote speaker, and just really an incredibly moving song written and performed by Maddie Alfaro and Poppy Dames, who is a student at Aldo Leopold High School. That was a very moving performance. We just thank everybody for coming out. As you drive past Hill Regional, you'll see a couple of trees out front that are lit up, and underneath the trees are pictures of many, many of our departed loved ones. We just really think that's a beautiful ceremony and thank the community for coming out. Just one more issue, and I'd like permission to approach the commission and give you a handout.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. Tonight, we will be hosting our annual State of a Hospital address. It's really a community event, an opportunity to dialogue with our community, and it is tonight from 5:30 to 7:30 at WNMU Global Resource Center. This is the brochure we'll be passing out, just says some information about some of our key activities and our key outcomes over the year, and hope to see as many people as possible for that dialogue. May I stand for questions?
Sure appreciate you coming. Most, the best reports we've had from the hospital in years have been years to last year, so we appreciate you and Holly spending all the time we need to know what's going on up there. You betcha. Okay, let's move to the sheriff. I usually go to Mike, so he wasn't ready.
Hey, Committee members, Chairman, Commissioners, just getting prepared for the holiday season. We've been actually fairly busy over the last couple of months. Just happy to report that our burglaries are down. My staff has really been out there working hard and keeping up with the criminal element out there, so I'm pleased to report that. Just like I say, we're going to get ready for the holidays. Those are usually busy for us, just getting ready for them. Other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
Questions, Sheriff? No? No? Yes, sir. You guys want to go with cameras?
Yes, sir, we are.
Help?
We've already purchased, we've been using them for the last couple of months already, and they are a great tool to have, and I, we will continue to use them. It's beneficial to the officers and to the community, so.
You're ahead of the game.
We are ahead of the game. Thank you.
Doesn't surprise me. Eric, what's happening at the assessments office?
Hi, Chairman, Commissioners, and the board. As you're all aware, this is my last month working for the county, and I want to thank you guys for all the support you have given me throughout the years, and I made a lot of friends along the way. I'll miss that. And it was a pleasure serving the people of Grand County. That's it.
Sheriff, it's a pleasure working with you, and yes, thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you very much. We will get you back in one way or another somewhere.
Mike? You want to be a deputy?
Yeah.
J L? There you go. Live meet there, Mike. He's ready to be in.
Thank you.
Chairman, Commission members, I respectfully submit my report from November 8th to December 12. December 5th, 2014. The first three items, their status has remained the same. Item number four, my training update. The department is currently scheduling the ICS, Incident Command Training for the employees, and most of this training can be conducted online, and that's what we're scheduling out right now. A representative from the Detention Center will be attending the EMS tabletop tomorrow. Mr. Hilton is scheduled for all the departments, so I think that's a good thing, and we're all going to get together and come up with a scenario and work our way through that. So that's what we have right now scheduled for our training. The intervention, the inmate support program, we do have a subgroup that is going to be attending the Legislative Health Committee hearings in Albuquerque tomorrow, and again, we'll solicit their support, and hopefully, we can see if we can get our bill back up to the legislature and see what we can do with that as far as our funding is concerned. The recognition program, as I stated last month, we have nominated Officer Duron. She has just started with the department. She hasn't been on very long, but she's really been working out really well, so we chose her and nominated her for the Employee of the Month, and she's recognized for her dedication and service to the Grant County Detention Center, so we applaud her for that, and that's why I'm recognizing her today. On our detention statistics, the average daily population for November 8th through December, we have 62, that's three more than last month. High population males is 60, which is five more than last month. High population females, 11, which that status remained the same from last month. So we did have 62 inmates incarcerated in the facility during this reporting period, and that was three more than last month, which shows a slight increase in activity. On our monthly arrest totals for the month of November 2014, Silver City Police Department had 110, New Mexico State Police had 12, Grant County SO had 31, Santa Clara had 4, Bear PD had 15, and Hurley PD had 3, and the APO, the Adult Probation Office, had 2. Item number nine on our detention facility, we conducted nine district court transports. Magistrate Court, Division 1, we had 10, Division 2, we had 3. Silver City Municipal Court, we had 10, Santa Clara Municipal Court, 0, Bear Municipal Court had 1, Hurley Municipal Court had 1. We conducted zero medical transports during this reporting period, so the total number of transport during this reporting period is 34, which is compared to 30 of last month. On our utilization and occupancy, offense levels, we had 14 felonies, 76 misdemeanors, other probation and warrants totaled 120. The total is 210 compared to 146 for last month's reporting period. Total hours in custody is 14,699, and the average length of stay is 7.66 days. The offense level sentencing is an increase compared to last month. What I put in the statistics with the census report, just to kind of give you an idea of the males and females that were being, that are being incarcerated in the facility, and this is the new statistic, during this reporting period, there were 186 males, 65 females, which totaled at 251. The total inmates released during this period are 191, and that's male and females. Total number of inmates in the detention at the end of this reporting period were 62. Total number of days the inmates were held is 127, and statistics for inmates held for more than 24 hours, we had 123 males, 35 females, which totaled 158. And today, we'll have the Health Department, will be coming to the facility, and they'll be doing flu shots for the employees and also training the inmates that want to participate in that. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions for Mike?
Mike, the other day when we were at that other meeting, the substance abuse meeting, you know, we talked about saving some time in jail as far as getting your, your people are getting the inmates assessed. Have we done anything more on that, or is, because such huge savings. And you may want to explain to the other commissioners exactly what that is.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hall, I did, as a result of that meeting and the conversation I had with La Frontera, I did meet with them, they came into my office, and they agreed to, they'll be starting sometime this week, they agreed to come to the detention facility, and they will be doing full mental and substance abuse assessments for the inmates. And with this, it's kind of, it's going to help in a couple of ways. First of all, it's, the, right now, across the state, there is, it's been brought to detention, all the detention facilities for the special needs inmates, and these inmates that I just described to you fall into that category. And what we're trying to do right now, what we're going to do with La Frontera, we're going to work with them to help the special needs inmates when they're incarcerated in the facility, to give them the best care that we can for them while they're there, and also possibly look at alternatives for those special needs inmates, which would include, you know, more care and possibly working with the courts to see if there's something we can do to get them into facilities rather than have them incarcerated in the facility.
And there's an issue there about the length of time it took to get these individuals assessed and transporting. And so with now them doing it right here, that means less transport, that means less time in jail.
That's right, Sheriff. And also, hopefully, what we're going to try and do is speed up the process for these assessments, rather than have to send the prisoners somewhere else, which we've been having to do, and the courts have been having to do, and then schedule the assessments, they'll already be done. And right now, La Frontera, when I asked them about the costs, because that certainly was something that was weighing on my mind, and they agreed that they would go ahead and do these full assessments using non-medicaid dollars. So I think that's a win-win for the inmates and for the facility and for the entire community.
Okay, anything else?
So how many people do we have in right now that the state should be reimbursing us for on the?
I'll tell you, most of the, as you can see in my statistics, most of the warrants and stuff, I think the statistic number that I gave you, that's, yes, sir, that's under the warrants, and that's the ones that have been arrested, so most of those, if they don't bond out, then, and they remain in jail, or they're given a probationary, they've been, their sentence has been revoked for violations of conditions in their probationary period, and we hold them and we have to house them. Those are most of the costs that we get from the state, but I'll be honest with you, sir, the reimbursement that we get from the state is minimal compared to the cost that we have for the incarcerations.
Would you say about three-fifths?
Yes, sir. And we do submit it, and we have to wait until the end of the year, and usually in May, before we submit, and they'll, they'll give us one last, one day in May to take that average, so that's also very excuseable, because during the entire year, we may have more than the number of inmates that we have on that one particular day when we have to submit our survey to give us, to get an average of how many we have. So we're, you know, I know the legislature and Association of Counties are making that work.
And the problem is, is now with the oil problem, the state's lost, what, about $150 million in general fund revenue? So getting that extra $2 million into that line item is going to be tough, but that's one of the things I hope that the detention administrators affiliate really works on this year, because that's, that's one of the things that can really help the county.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'll start pretty much with the DWI program. We, DFA will be doing an audit on the program come first of the year, which is, I believe, January 6th, so I'll be working with Cindy. She'll be contacting you, Mr. Chairman, along with the county manager, on some of the information that they might be asking for you, so we'll be in touch with you there. Senior program, we just purchased a food truck that was going to be in service. It should have been probably about a month ago, but we had some issues, and so we're working through those and making sure that the employees are trained on it. It'll keep the food hot when it's supposed to be hot and cool when it's supposed to be cool, so, and those are for the conjugate visits, and it'll make the job a lot easier to go around and get these people, elderly, the food that they need. From Fire Department, we had a training over at Whiskey Creek, propane burn, invited all the nine districts, most of them showed up, and so that was done. We'll also be going through some other training that was put on by State Forest Street. We'll start end of this month and continue into the fire season, probably end of February into March, working on that. The Tycoon Volunteer Fire Department finally got their certificate of occupancy, a couple of months late, I believe, but I want to thank definitely Architectural Workshop and Sacatoon Construction for the work that they did. I know Architectural Workshop Services pretty much took over the project when it was already, you know, and had already started, but I do think that as the General Service Director and working as the FMO, working with the fire departments and these contractors, that I can do a better job of communication, and that's along with getting the projects done on time, working with our contractors and the chiefs of those departments and making sure that what has been asked for has been done. But again, I think I can do a better job of that, and I will work with them as we go forward on some other projects with some of our VFDs and some of our volunteer fire With the Public Works Department Shooting Range, trying to get the trap shooter shoot building done, that again, has taken a lot more time than we expected, just because some of the inspectors, what he wanted done and what we had done, just didn't kind of, so he put a stop to some of the stuff we were doing, so it took a little longer. And then his schedule, trying to get him, you know, on the same schedule to have that inspection done, and not being able to make it because of other commitments that he had, also some electrical work that we didn't foresee had to be done, so, but we're getting it done. Hopefully, by next week, we'll have it all done, and they'll be able to open that thing up, and I know we met with the board, with the county manager several weeks ago, so we're going to continue to work on that. We installed the new PA system. Commissioner Ramos, over there, there are some small glitches, as they say, with the system, but we're going to work those through along with everybody at the shooting range, and to make it a better place for people to go out and shoot. Fort Bear Park, we started, we're working on that constantly, making sure that, you know, the weeds are all taken care of. I know it's winter time, but they're still coming through that artificial turf. We're working on the satellite restrooms, removing those, and going to pour some slabs so we can get the, so we can get the portal potties in there for people to use and make it a lot easier. I think it'll be a little bit more cost efficient for the guys, for us, to contract somebody to go out and drain those for us during the winter, because as you know, the pressure was kind of clogging those restrooms up, and people were just, it just wasn't feasible for us. Now, the airport received a fuel truck on Saturday, so that's there. Service tech will be here, actually, was supposed to be here yesterday, will probably be here today to inspect everything over there. Justin spoke with World Fuel, they should be down here to look at the credit card machine and get that going, so we're hoping next week, everything will be in place for us to have fuel out at the airport.
Yeah, I was hoping that people are training now.
Yes, people are training, and we continue to work on that portion along with Justin and myself, David Morrison, who's out there, and James Delgado, who went to the training. He did this type of work in the military, so it was kind of beneficial for us to send him to training, so we're going to work on that and make sure that we get that off and running. The airport's looking really good. We had, we're working on putting a diesel tank out there for our equipment, working kind of with Earl, having to get his guys out there and give us fuel all the time, just didn't find that feasible, so we're going to work on trying to get a diesel tank there in the fuel farm area so that we can continue to fill up the equipment that we have out We had their story sealed by IPR out of Albuquerque last week, that's done. They still got to do the striping, that's going to be done next week, and so hopefully, that will be pretty much done with that project. Botique Air will start supposedly January 15th, but Great Lakes will continue to fly. They have until March 15th to actually fly to our airport, so whether they continue to go through into 2015, I can't answer that, but Botique Air will start as of January 15th, they want to be up and running. Continue to be busy at all the centers, the senior centers, and making sure that they're ready for the winter. Conference Center, obviously, going to be busy up until we go forward with this project. Detention Center, with all the, you know, the stuff that they have going on a hilly basis, I have to thank the Public Works guys, the department, Justin's team, and the guys that are working with them, because they are all over the county, trying to make sure that every facility gets the attention that it needs, from the senior programs to senior centers, to the conference center, to the airport, and everything else. Other than that, unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions, Randy?
You don't have very much going on, do you?
Hey, Randy, I was going to ask, have you talked to Chief Chavez about the curriculum they were putting together for Dr. Shepherd? We're trying to build a bridge between us so that they can start teaching firefighter one classes there. Can you?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ramos, that has been in the talks with the Rural Fire Chiefs Association. Chief Chavez says we're still working on that, along with Mr. Haldina of the Forest Service, and so I don't know what the communication has been with Dr. Shepherd, but I know that, you know, that they're continuing to work at that so that we can, we can have something in place, so that we can have something here local.
I know it got busy during fire season, and Gabe wasn't able to work on it for a while, but if he puts them together, please keep me in the loop and schedule a meeting with Dr. Shepherd. I know he's really willing to try and work with us and get something done there at the university.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ramos, I'll do that.
The only thing I have is, Randy, you may want to also share with the commissioners the work that you're doing now with the Community Wildfire Protection Plan with the city, and so in fact, we've got a meeting tonight at 6:00. I'm making a thing.
Right, right. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, he's right, we're working on actually two community wild protection plans, one that the city has, which is in the city and reaches out to the ETJ or ETZ zone, working with the Chief Hyvick and Assistant Chief Foul, community meetings, so that they understand the city, because the way the CWP works is that you have to have the community involvement to try to become firewise community, so with all the fuels and the different types of fuels that we have here, we want to make sure that those communities, whether it be Indian Hills subdivision, up off of Langstuck Drive, up of Little Walnut, the Dos Gregos area, we need those communities, those communities involved to understand what the, what the fuel types are, what the dangers are, and what mitigation we can do to kind of hold out those, you know, those fires that they were to come. So Commissioner Hall is right, we'll be attending the meeting with Silver Fire tonight up in the Indian Hills area.
This is a good time to be working on that as a resident, as far as your plan is concerned. But then also, I'm thinking that maybe Commissioner Ramos, this is something that you ought to be, you know, interested in as far as your watershed, the planning that's going on in this, so we'll try to bring you in on that.
And Mr. Shepherd and the members of the Board? You know, we did get the grant to update the countywide protection plant, and we are working with Mr. Ralph Pope on that. We will be reaching out to our communities countywide, doing the same thing with Silver's working, what they've done is started something from scratch. We have a document in place. We're not going to try to rewrite the document, we're just going to try to update it, because that's basically what it is, is to try to find those areas that we find, that we find as high-risk areas. How do we mitigate those areas? How do we get grant money to help the communities mitigate those areas and make them not so much fireproof, but the idea around community firewise community is to make sure that people understand, you know, what it is around their own neighborhoods to protect their neighborhoods if a fire comes down. Even by saying that, a fire's going to come, a fire's going to come. We've got away from the, you know, the buffer zone or the 30-foot, you know, anchor point, as you call it, for communities. What we want to do is we turn to the ready, set, go. Get yourself ready, which means prepare your property, get your documents together, and when they say to go, then you go. So we're working on that to try to re-educate the public, and that's really what it is, is to make sure that the people understand that we have that risk here with fires, and we just want to make sure that our community is safe and doing the right things to help the fire community understand what they need as far as, how do we get in with the resources that we have to protect homes, what type of egress and regress do we have, you know, what property owners have done their due diligence to make sure that their properties are safe to a certain extent. So those kind of things, and that's just a wide program of educating our community, and I think we're doing a good job. I think Silver City's doing a good job. We've met with the Rural Fire Chiefs Association. We've met with the Rural Fire Chiefs Association, and so we're all on board together, practically. The Forest Service is on board, have spoken to several of the FMOs there, especially the Staff of Aviation Officer, Mr. Gabe O'Keefe, who comes and gives us a lot of the information that we need. And we'll continue to reach out to those resources to make sure that we're on the right track with everybody.
And we've been updated very oftenly by you and Ralph Pope at our Eco Watershed Group, so we appreciate that, and we'll continue to work together like we have been, you know. Those meetings we've been having, when we've met in my office, were real, very substantial and really helpful. And we'll keep working with Vicky on getting the information from her through the Eco Watershed Group.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ramos, thank you. I did wanna say something, you know, beforehand, my presentation here is, you know, Mary Guthrie's a county assessor, and she'll be leaving. I worked with her for 25 years, she'll be retiring here in December, so I just wanna give her, I was hoping she'd be here today, wanna give her a shout. I've worked with her for over 20 years, and she was there, you know, every step of the way during my career there at the assessor's office. So, I just wanna thank her and wish her the best as she moves forward, and whether she's really gonna retire in the Fraser field or not, but I just, I wanted to say that. So, unless you have any other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Earl, if you can, if that microphone's not burning up, I guess you could.
Good thing Anthony in here.
My ladder could stand it.
Pretty much busy as usual. We're doing some cross-training down there on blade operators. Been able to get some roads capped, I got Rook and Arrow done, I got the barge ditches filled in where they were real deep. We're out there on Conny Road now doing the same thing I did, is tearing down to about a one-lane road. We're trying to get it widened back up. Been doing some patching as weather permits, and other than that, it's business as usual down there.
Any questions for him? I saw you guys all circle him up when he walked in, so I figured she got him.
Actually, we're asking about his son's, what, that three-point shot from the whole length of a quarter. That was a heck of a shot he took, and that one game, what, two weeks ago?
Yeah, it was one to the left, I do.
It was awesome, guys. It's on Facebook, you gotta see it. He takes two steps in, grabs a ball, throws it, and it goes right in. That's pretty awesome.
Cool. Rob?
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. December 16th, from 9 to 5 in my office, we'll have candidates sign up for school board elections. I'm trying to talk them into it. Didn't look very interested, so, but I'll have some more information on that on Thursday's meeting, give you guys which districts are up for election in March.
Okay. Anything going on with the recount?
Waiting and waiting and waiting. We have a day, and then we don't have a day, and then we have a day, and then we don't have a day.
Do you may end up in Supreme Court?
You may, who knows?
You been talking to Daniel?
We have, yeah, he's been very involved, and even with, you know, once that ball hits the attorney's courts, we're just waiting for them.
They're just spending their candidate's money.
That's just.
Okay. Charlie?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just a couple of things. I just wanted to let mainly the employees know and the public know that we are aware of the announcement by Silver Health, their announcement to discontinue accepting Presbyterian insurance in March. We are working very closely with Robert Rejewski, our broker. He has called in to Presbyterian, and we will have that resolved prior to March. Thank goodness we have a little bit of time, but just want you to know that we are working on that. Just a couple other things. Anthony and I attended the Prospectors Forum last week and presented our Kepala Outland Projects to the legislators. I attended the Oak Groves Homeowners Association meeting a couple Saturdays ago.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. They are very active, they meet quarterly. I guess I will be going back. Their main concerns were roads, but it was.
Should've taken her on.
In addition to Boutique Air coming online in mid-January, it's their intentions to do some type of open house between now and then to let the public see the aircraft and just have a general.
You wanna give us a ride?
Meeting greet. Maybe they will. Be right. And I'm very excited that we finally have fuel coming our way. So, other than that, I don't have anything else unless you have questions for me.
I think we did get some information back from DFA, right, on our land tree?
Yes, we did. Abby's been working on that.
They approved it. So, we're finally going to exchange the property with Freeport. Yeah, it only took seven or eight months, but yes, we're almost there. Now, I, me and the attorney from Freeport will finalize our contracts, our agreements, and move forward.
I just wanna say on that point, I really appreciate Freeport, they were very diligent on getting this stuff to us, and then DFA just didn't see the wisdom of trading, us trading an acre away for three acres, and they were trading ways in the middle of the mine. So, they really fought us on this, and I don't know why. It's just one more of those things.
I guess they thought it was more complicated than it was. I really tried to explain it as clearly as possible. I didn't think it was too complicated.
Not even a shoulder, huh?
May justify the job.
Thanks for getting it done. Appreciate it. That's it. Okay, Commissioner?
Well, I'm glad you brought up the Presbyterian problem. Got a lot of employees calling me on that too, so appreciate that. Eric and Mary, you're gonna be really missed, because Eric's gone now, so we already miss them. But they would be very missed, and, you know, thank you for your service, and that's pretty much all I've got.
Okay. I'm gonna start from first. All right. I don't have anything other than, are we doing the swearing-in on Friday? Is that when that's happening? Friday the 12th at 9:00? So, the elected officials that have been elected will be sworn in for their term of office beginning January 1st. You can get sworn in. So, always say we're gonna get sworn at, right, Sheriff? For the next four years? Okay, other than that, anybody else have seconds? I'll take a motion to adjourn. All those favor six, five, and say nine?
Aye.
Fantastic.